If you do not wish to speak, but would like your support or opposition recorded, please sign in on the sheet on the table at the back of the chamber. So anybody wishing to speak in favor or against on order number 024-093. Yes, it's about a grant of location for National Grid. National Grid, and only that. Thank you. So seeing no public comment is wished, I will close this public hearing at 6:31, and we'll be back at 6:35 for another grant of location this evening for National Grid. Thank you. I'd like to call the September 9th, 6:35, public hearing to order. This public hearing is for Council Order 2024-094, Grant of Location, National Grid, Maypole Road at 28 Furnace Brook Parkway. So at this point, I'd like to ask anyone wishing to speak in favor or opposition to come to the podium, state your name and address. If you do not wish to speak, but would like your support or opposition recorded, please sign in on the sheet on the table at the back of the chamber. We have also received written correspondence from some folks. One was Paul and Diane Shinet of 14 Maypole Road requesting that a street light be installed on the new pole. And we also have another one from Massimino Mariggi, Ph.D., of 17 Maypole Road, who requests that supply remain in the back of the house, or is another pole in the corner of the back of 15 Maypole, 28 and 38 of Furnace Brook. So I will reach out to my colleague. I don't see anybody wishing to speak. Oh, we do. Here we go. Very good. Please state your name and address. Excuse me, ma'am. Ma'am, please stop.
Excuse me. Not, not, not the time. This is not the time. Listen, we will hold this meeting all night. This is not a public comment period for any subject matter that was just brought up. The chair of this meeting reserves the right to eject any person from this room that is causing either physical or vocal harm, and not germane to any part of this meeting. We very much appreciate your being here. We ask you to respect the decorum and the rules of this room. Kathy, especially from you, madam, especially from you, please. Again, we will hold this meeting all night until people remain silent. Free speech is fine. We'll have a great discussion about free speech this evening, but this is not the time. There's not an open public comment period to this meeting, nor the regular agenda to the City Council meeting. This is not a back-and-forth discussion either.
Okay, so with that, I would like to yield to Counselor McCarthy.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor Harris. On that item on Maypole, I'd like to just put in that I had some correspondence with the Shinets back and forth, and I'd like to add, make sure we add that light now to this public hearing, to this request, so it goes up all in one, all at once, and we get it done right now. Just add a street light on that pole. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McCarthy. Seeing no other public comment, we are going to end this public hearing at 6:39, and we'll be back in about 30 seconds for the next one. Thank you. So we're back again at 6:40, a public hearing. This public hearing is for Council Order 2024-095, Grant of Location, National Grid Gas, 2838 Parkhurst Street and Winthrop Street. At this point, I'd like anyone asking to wish and speak in favor or opposition of this order to come to the podium, state your name and address. If you do not wish to speak, if you'd like to show your support or opposition recorded, please sign on the sheet at the back of the chamber. So seeing none, I will close this public hearing at 6:41, and we'll be back for the regular council meeting starting in five minutes, four minutes at 6:45. Thank you.
Good evening. Welcome to the Monday, September 9th, 2024, City Council Meeting. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Ash.
President.
Counselor Campbell.
President.
Counselor Devine.
President.
Counselor DeBarna.
President.
Counselor Harris.
President.
Counselor Liang. Counselor McCarthy.
President.
Counselor Minton. President Kane.
Present.
Nine members you have acquired.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Please stand if you're able to observe a moment of silence. Please use this time as you will. Please turn to the flag for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, please read the open meeting law.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present and deemed acknowledged impermissible.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. First item on the agenda?
Number one, 2024-096, An Appropriation for 1,800,000 Preliminary Work for New Squanam Elementary School.
Madam Clerk, on that... Mr. President? The President recognizes Counselor Harris.
Yes, I normally would put things through the committee, but I'd ask the body to vote this in, so that tonight... No? Okay, then.
Okay, one moment.
Thanks for the... Okay, go ahead. You go for it.
Through you, Mr. President, Counselor. It's a great thought, and we could certainly do it tonight, but requirements require us to sit for two weeks because it is part of the bond package that will... And I apologize for not letting you know that beforehand, but this is the same thing we did in June. It's preliminary work. There are some issues we're working through with the Massachusetts School Building Authority relative to the design. We had hoped to be in front of this body with the full appropriation this month. It looks like we're going to be into October, November-ish, for that final vote for the full appropriation for the new school. So this is another piece of gap funding that will get us between now and the full appropriation. Again, this is not an additional cost, as we said the last time in June when we did this. This will all get baked into the full appropriation amount at the end. So this is not an additional cost. It'll just get peeled off the actual full appropriation when we do that later this fall, Mr. President.
So with that, put it into finance. Okay, motion move to finance.
Motion move.
Seconded by Counselor McCarthy. All is in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Number two, 2024-097, Ordinance Amending Chapter 375 of Zoning, Creation of a Congregate Over 55 Housing Ovale District.
Uh, sorry? Yep, on the motion, Counselor Liang.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to move this to ordinance committee, please.
Okay, motion move to ordinance, second by Counselor Devine. All is in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it. With the indulgence of my colleagues, I'd like to move item number four before we move item number three.
It went to ordinance.
With the indulgence of my colleagues, yeah. Can you put that in the form of a motion, please?
Motion to move item number four, 2024-099, ahead of 2024-098, number three.
Thank you. All is in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Number four, 2024-099, A Resolved Resolution to Support of a Ceasefire in Gaza.
Okay. So I think that's why everyone's here tonight in this room. This is not an open comment period, sir. And there's no questions, there's no answers. That's not a period that exists in this meeting. We're going through our regularly scheduled agenda. Thank you very much for coming. You don't get a question. Yeah. You can question before or after, not during the meeting. Thank you. So upfront, this has been an issue that was presented to us at the City Council for a while now, and personally, I never wanted to see it come on the agenda, and I don't think any of my other colleagues did, quite frankly. It wasn't something that we thought was germane to this body, that we had any sort of capacity for making a decision about, and personally, I don't support it. I did not write this resolution. It was prepackaged. But I did submit it to the City Council's agenda because I believe in free speech, and I believe in democracy. You can be as rude as you'd like, but I still put this on the agenda for the purposes of people being able to convey what they believe, whether someone likes it or not. And now, at least, you have an understanding of where people sit on the side of particular issues. That's all you can ask for, whether you agree or disagree. I don't know where this is going to go. I don't know where this discussion will go between my colleagues, but again, I do not support it. With that being said, I'll open up dialogue for my colleagues. Counselor McCarthy.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I'll get right to it. I don't support it either. I think the ordinance is rather ridiculous. I look at the second paragraph that talks about October 7th, the Israeli government siege, and the numbers, which I don't know accurate or not, you hear all these things, but October 7th was a barbaric attack on Israel. There were, we don't know how many families, how many people were killed, hostages were taken, and when I saw this really one-sided ordinance, I, you know... A lot of us pay attention to what's going on in the Middle East, and I couldn't believe the ordinance was put this way. I don't think there's anybody up here who doesn't want a ceasefire. But to phrase it this way is completely wrong. I mean, Israel has been persecuted and attacked for thousands of years. It goes back to the Ottoman...
Please. It goes back to the... Wait, wait. Dave, one moment, please. This is not a space for celebratory on either side of whatever you believe about this issue. Please listen. And we do reserve the right, we do also reserve the right to ask you to leave. And if you do not control yourself, we'll have you escorted out. Please, that does not deserve applause. That exists on any side of this room. Please, respect the rules of this room. Counselor.
Thank you. It goes back thousands of years to the Ottoman Empire. It was made up of Jordan, Saudi Arabia, and other countries. It goes back to World War II, when a guy named Adolf Hitler was trying to annihilate the Jewish population. And what I saw on October 7th is the same thing. This isn't a Gaza Strip thing. These people want to annihilate the Jewish community. They want to wipe out Israel, and I am not supporting any of that, and I won't be supporting any other resolution like this in the future. So I'm a no.
Thank you, Counselor McCarthy. Any of my other colleagues? Counselor Ash.
Thank you, Counselor President. I just want to be clear. When I noticed this on the agenda last week, I did add myself as a co-sponsor because I've spoken with a number of Ward II residents, and this particular resolution is important to them. And it's been the better part of the year. So seeing this on the agenda was important to a number of my constituents. I understand how polarizing the issues are, and I would really like to be able to not go into detail on those issues, but I do share some similar sentiments with my colleagues. That being said, I added myself as a co-sponsor on this because I knew it was important to a number of my constituents that have been showing up to these meetings every week. And we can see here by everybody that's in attendance that it's important to people on both sides. So that's all I'll say. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Devine.
My second job is a carpenter. I took this position because I wanted to help my neighborhood and make sure that my ward was taken care of on a municipal level. I don't work in the State Department. I'm not in any Committee for Foreign Affairs. It's not my position to take any side. This is something that's been going on for thousands of years, I think. It's not for me to make a decision for anyone here. I'm here to make sure that my constituents have potholes filled, their proper taxes taken care of. And I really do, I feel for everyone. I'm a very empathetic person. But this is not my position. I was not elected to do this. So I will not be voting on this.
Thank you, Counselor Devine. Counselor Minton.
Yes, briefly, I went through hundreds and hundreds of emails, and one that really struck me is behind my belief, and that said, "This is a complicated, sensitive international issue. It has nothing to do with your role as counselors of the city of Quincy." I represent the people of Ward 5, but I don't want to alienate anybody by taking a side on this. I want people to come to me when they need help, they need services. That's as simple as that, so I'm not going to vote on this.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Campbell.
And at the risk of saying, agreeing with the group, I really respect the people that came in here. Like Counselor Ash, I wanted to be a co-sponsor of this as well, and give the voice to the people who have been here, you know, put in the work, and who have really done the best that they can to be a part of a solution. And, you know, based on what was presented, I think we can all agree that a ceasefire is very important, and that's where I think we should all send our prayers and energy towards. But as far as, you know, this council, I think that we're creating a really slippery slope if we start to really engage in items like this that really don't fall under our purview. So with that said, I will dissent on it.
Counselor Campbell. Counselor Liang.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to first and foremost thank you for your leadership tonight. I want to thank you for bringing this matter in front of us, knowing that while it may not be something that we all agree on, while it may be a contentious issue, while it may, you know, cause a lot of passionate feelings one way or the other from a lot of folks across the city, many here tonight, many not here tonight, and many we've heard from, et cetera, et cetera. You still forged ahead because that was your job, right? You're owed a job to the residents to put an item on the agenda, period, right? That's what the role of a council president is, is to set the agenda, regardless of your own personal, you know, opinions or thoughts or anything like that, and that's what you did tonight. So I just want to first and foremost thank you for that. Secondly, I just want to echo my colleague sentiment and thank the folks who are here on both sides of the issue. I think for me, no matter what the issue is, it could be something like a new intersection that was put in very recently around the corner that a lot of people don't like. It could be an issue like this that's global. I, you know, always appreciate when I hear from folks in our community, especially from both sides of an issue, because it informs me and maybe my own thoughts, my experience, my bias, et cetera. So I do think it's important that regardless if you're happy with our decisions or not, even with my colleagues, right, that we all hear from each other and educate each other on all issues. This reminds me of, and I'm sure folks are sick of me talking about it, but back in, you know, 2016, when sanctuary city was a very hot phrase and topic as well, and folks wanted to have a conversation about it, right? It became about the term. It became about the phrase. It became about the political divisiveness of it, and it completely moved away from the actual work and the actual issue, which is, are people safe here in the city of Quincy? We had a conversation with the police, and they said, "We're never going to drag kids off a school bus," right? Do you get what I'm saying? Like, we had a conversation, and the result of it was the practical implication and a practical solution, which is what my job is as a counselor, is to focus on the real practical effects that I can impart in my role. And we never voted on anything with Sanctuary City. But talking about it in this room caused then an actual impact to happen. And when it comes to this resolve, it creates the conversation. But for me, I'm missing the piece on where can I create actual effect and impact? And so I've done a lot of, again, listening to folks, talking to folks. I've reached out to a lot of different nonprofit organizations, not just locally, but, you know, community-based and, you know, formally organized nonprofit organizations across the state as well. And, look, I share everyone's hurt and frustration, right? And I can't even begin to imagine because I don't have a personal connection to what's going on, but I can say without a shadow of a doubt that none of us here support mass murder and genocide. And I would ask respectfully that, you know, because I have a desire for actual effect and impact, that does not directly translate to, well, you must support mass murder. And I've been doing this nine years in this city. I would hope that folks know that I've always worked off of humanity, and just because I don't support something that feels like it's going to be politically divisive and divide our community and cause more harm than actual effective solution, that then directly means I support mass murder. That's not the case. And so I just want to be really upfront and transparent, as I've always been, that this is my deliberation up until this point. And again, I won't be supporting something that is rooted in political divisiveness, and instead will commit the rest of my time to working with these organizations, working with actual people to find a solution that I, the city council, can impart, as big or small as it is. But that's not going to be a resolution. I feel like for me, that's just me standing here and putting my name on something. I'm driven by action, and so that's what I will commit to, but I won't be supporting something that, to me, doesn't feel like will create sustaining impact. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Liang. Any other? So Counselor Liang, thanks for those words. I think that that was a very impactful statement. I don't, you know, personally, I've been in a lot of rooms lately and meeting with very different types of people across the state that share similar and different sentiments. And the one thing that I'm always going to refuse to do is tell people what they want to hear. Just because they want to hear it'll make them feel better. That's not impactful. That doesn't move the needle. That doesn't allow us to develop solutions to move forward. But what I've learned in nine years in this role is that you also can't make everyone happy. You're always doing something wrong. You had a whole room full of people tonight that, who knows what they wanted from us? But yet some people just walk out, and you still hear them out there, you know? So there's always something. But this is a very, very tense and touchy subject, and I appreciate my colleagues and their forthrightness and not seeing an entertainment of emotion. Madam Clerk?
Next item?
The motion fails.
Yep.
Thank you. Next item, please, Madam Clerk.
Number three, 2024-098, Resolve Requesting Amendment to the Massachusetts Right to Shelter Law.
Okay. So this is another issue that, this stems from the federal level, but it is now an issue that affects us locally. It starts with the federal government's inaction to either enforce immigration laws that are on the books, or to develop further legislation that would prevent our borders from continuing to be open. And connected to that, in this state, and my counselor colleague just brought up Sanctuary City, and, you know, when that subject matter was first brought to the City Council, it was very contentious, and... Thank you. So in Massachusetts, a law that was enacted in 1983, which was certainly a worthwhile effort to protect some of the most vulnerable populations among us, including homeless families and children and pregnant women, has now trickled into a state crisis, where now we have had an unfortunate problem that has stemmed from migrants coming from different places to Massachusetts that have now overwhelmed the state shelter system. And particular groups of people who have come here through less-than-legal means have now been prioritized over some of the most vulnerable residents of Massachusetts and citizens of the United States. There has been a lack of action taken at the state level to amend this rule so that the state shelter system doesn't continue to be burdened and that these vulnerable individuals and families do not continue to be deprioritized. There is also a fiscal responsibility and burden that is being absorbed by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the tune of a billion last year slated for another billion this year, which has trickled down into effects of state and local aid, where now you see various cities and towns across the state whose budgets are busting, and people are going for Proposition 2 and 1/2 overrides. We've been fortunate. In Quincy, we have been hosting a welcome center, as people very well know. But what you've seen is that because there has been an influx of people with no place to go, they were sleeping at Logan Airport. Now they're no longer afforded the opportunity to do that. They're now sleeping at MBTA stations. And it's now not Wallaston T Station alone. It is also JFK UMass T Station. So this is not being managed with utmost care, consideration, and compassion if we are treating people who are coming to this country for a better life and turning them into the next class of homelessness in Massachusetts. So what this resolution is advocating for and asking for, it's asking for the state legislature, as well as the governor of Massachusetts, to amend the right to shelter law. This is something that needs desperate and devoted attention, and it would amend it so that individuals and families who have been residents of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for a period of not less than six months are immediately prioritized for emergency shelter, and those individuals must be citizens of the United States or lawful permanent residents. With that, open it to my colleagues. Anyone? Counselor McCarthy.
I think it's a great move, Ian. I think that you're right. It's out of control across the country. It's definitely affected us, and it's definitely put folks that are from Massachusetts, citizens of Massachusetts, veterans of Massachusetts, I could go on and on, on the back burner in a lot of cases. So I think that should be recognized. I'll be in favor of this.
Counselor Liang.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to start off by saying, again, thank you for bringing this forward. I don't agree with the method, and so I won't be supporting this resolve, but I think it bears repeating that I'm grateful for the effort, right? Because time and again, we were hearing from people... Because time and again, we were hearing from people, residents in the city, and actually, frankly, folks out of the city, saying, you know, "What are you doing? There's kids sleeping at this station on the ground with not, what are you doing? What's the city doing? What are you doing? What's the city council doing?" And you're doing something. It's not a method I agree with. I think that, you know, the barriers that you're asking to be put into place, my understanding of it is, well, because there are residents who are here that have lived in Massachusetts for longer than six months, that are residents here, that are citizens here, and still don't have housing. So let's find actual roofs over these people's heads, right, before we invite more people in with the promise of shelter when we don't have said shelter. And so I think, you know, our passion and want, right, desperate want to do something is shared, and that's why I appreciate that you stepped up and did something. Shame on me for not having a solution. And, you know, this is only going to push me to work hard and to try to figure out a solution and get creative to figure something out together. But this particular one is not one that I can support. But again, I hope you know, and I hope folks understand and appreciate that the purpose here is not to be exclusive, but rather solutions forward, to put a roof over people's heads that we're inviting here. And I think that's what people are asking for us to do, is to find a fix. And so, thank you, but, right, so--
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Anyone else? Will you put in the form of motion?
Yes.
And as amended?
The-- Order number 234098, residents request amendment to the Mass right to shelter. I'll make that a motion as amended.
Motion to approve as amended. Do you have a second? Second from Counsel Devine. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Ash. Counsel Campbell. Counsel Devine.
Yes.
Counsel DeBona.
Yes.
Counsel Harris. Counsel Liang. Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Minton. President Kane.
Yes.
Six members.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, next item on the agenda.
Number five, 2024-100, a gift for $72,931.37 from Copeland Family Foundation for animal control vehicle.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Counsel McCarthy. Do you have a second? Counsel Campbell. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Ash. Counsel Campbell. Counsel Devine. Counsel DeBona. Counsel Harris. Counsel Liang. Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Minton. President Kane.
Yes.
Nine members.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Number six, 2024-101, gift for $7,500 for the Copeland Family Foundation, Inc.
Motion approved.
For animal shelter.
Motion approved, Counsel McCarthy, seconded by Counsel Campbell. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Ash. Counsel Campbell. Counsel Devine. Counsel DeBona. Counsel Harris. Counsel Liang. Counsel McCarthy. Counsel Minton. President Kane.
Yes.
Nine members.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Number seven, 2024-102, a gift for $1,000 from Father Bills in Main Spring, Inc., for IT classes.
Motion approved.
Motion approved, Counsel McCarthy, seconded by Counsel Campbell. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Ash. Counsel Campbell. Counsel Devine. Counsel DeBona. Counsel Harris. Counsel Liang. Counsel McCarthy. Counsel Minton. President Kane.
Yes.
Nine members.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Number eight, 2024-103, a gift for $450 from Wallaston Garden Club, Housneck Garden Club, and Seaside Gardeners of Squanum for Natural Resources.
Motion approved, Counsel McCarthy, seconded by Counsel Campbell. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Ash. Counsel Campbell. Counsel Devine. Counsel DeBona. Counsel Harris. Counsel Liang. Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Minton. President Kane.
Yes.
Nine members.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Number nine, 2024-104, a gift for $300 from various donors for Dear in memory of Sergeant John Ryan.
Motion approved.
Motion approved, made by Counsel McCarthy, seconded by Counsel Campbell. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Ash. Counsel Campbell. Counsel Devine. Counsel DeBona. Counsel Harris. Counsel Liang. Counsel McCarthy. Counsel Minton. President Kane.
Yes.
Nine members.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Number 10, 2024-105, a gift for $3,000 from various donors to Dear.
Motion approved.
Motion approved, made by Counsel McCarthy, seconded by Counsel Campbell. God bless you, Counsel Liang. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Ash. Counsel Campbell. Counsel Devine. Counsel DeBona. Counsel Harris. Counsel Liang. Counsel McCarthy. Counsel Minton. President Kane.
Yes.
Nine members.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That concludes our regularly scheduled--
One more. 11? Oh. Yep, one more.
One more? Oh, I'm sorry.
2024-106, a gift for $750 for various donors to Dear Camp.
Motion approved, Counsel McCarthy, seconded by Counsel Campbell. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Ash. Counsel Campbell. Counsel Devine. Counsel DeBona. Counsel Harris. Counsel Liang. Counsel McCarthy. Counsel Minton. President Kane.
Yes.
Nine members.
Okay, now we're done with the regularly scheduled meeting. Okay, approval of previous meeting minutes. Motion approved, Counsel Liang, seconded by Counsel Campbell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Communications and reports from the mayor, other city officers and city boards. Madam Clerk.
Yes, I do have two traffic requests to refer to ordinance committee for advertising. Ward one, Counsel McCarthy, add no parking on the odd side of Edgeway Road from Adeline Place to Greenleaf Street. Ward five, Counsel Minton, add handicap parking at 98 Standish Ave. I also have tonight three utilities for Public Works Committee for scheduling and advertising, grant of location, national grid gas, Southern Ottery, Bayview Street, Rivers Street, Moore Street, Graham Street, Silver Street, grant of location, national grid, Willard Street, from Copeland Street to I-93 to Rashudi Drive, grant of location, national grid, Furness Brook Parkway at Lafayette Street.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Unfinished business in proceeding meeting, seeing none. Reports of committees. Chair Harris.
Yes, thank you. We had a public hearing earlier this evening, 2024-093, grant of location, national grid, Town Hill Street, positive recommendation from the Public Works Committee. Motion to approve.
Motion approved, made by Counsel Harris, seconded by Counsel Campbell. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Ash. Counsel Campbell. Counsel Devine. Counsel DeBona. Counsel Harris. Counsel Liang. Counsel McCarthy. Counsel Minton. President Kane.
Yes.
Nine members.
Yes, I just have a question. Do, this has an amendment to it. Do I have to include that when I read it off about how the tele-- We're adding the light. Very good. Thank you. So we have a grant of location earlier this evening, national grid, Verizon, Maypole Road at 28 Furness Brook Parkway. Positive recommendation from the Public Works Committee. And also with that, there's an amendment that telephone, light would be placed on the pole. So, motion to approve.
Motion approved, made by Counsel Harris, seconded by Counsel McCarthy. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Ash. Counsel Campbell. Counsel Devine. Counsel DeBona. Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Liang. Counsel McCarthy. Counsel Minton. President Kane.
Yes.
Nine members.
Also, Chair?
Oh, one more. I'm sorry. 2024-095, grant of location, national grid, gas, 2838 Parkhurst Street, Winthrop and Winthrop Street. Positive recommendation from the Public Works Committee.
Positive recommendation from Chair Harris, seconded by Counsel McCarthy. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Ash. Counsel Campbell. Counsel Devine. Counsel DeBona. Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Liang. Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Minton. President Kane.
Yes.
Nine members.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Chair. Presentation of petitions, memorials, and remonstrance. Counsel Campbell.
Yeah, I wanted to take a brief moment. Specifically, I'm sitting in the seat of Louise Marshall's husband, Cliff Marshall. Louise left us today with her services. She passed away last week, and she was just a gem and someone very important to the city. Her husband, Cliff, was the sheriff of Norfolk County for many years. He was also a city counselor from 1966 to 1976 in the city of Quincy. And he was a Quincy Point guy and someone that, he raised four great, great men, Paul, Mike, Chucky, and Chris. And she had great-grandchildren and--
Five.
Great-grandchildren. Her name was Louise, but as Michael reminded us today in the eulogy, she'll always be Wheezy. But I just wanted to take a moment and extend our greeting, our best wishes to the Marshall family as they move on.
Thank you, Counsel Campbell. Okay, motions, orders, and resolutions. Scheduling of committee meetings and public hearings. We have our next regularly scheduled City Council meeting on Monday, September 16th at 6:30 PM, which is next week. And on that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Have a good night.